We have multiple signs keeping our thoughts and prayers in the military. Our law enforcement, all our first responders always return home safe. Thank you. Page?
Page two hundred and five of the House of Representatives America. To the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And for which the citizens of the public meetings, who are in this public meetings, who help to contribute in our latest newspapers, and for which we come from the Middlesex County website, we welcome the vote in the board of the Middlesex County Administration Building for twenty-eight hours in the downtown meeting, which will be coming to the end of the year.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asper Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Coppel. County Commissioner McCall. County Commissioner Nara. County Commissioner Tanaro. County Commissioner Director Rio.
Here, we have recognition.
Um, we have two proclaiming, yeah, they're quick, proclaiming declaring May twenty twenty-four, that meant all the words month, and second is honoring the end of the season on her wonderful birthday.
Is there a motion to adopt a vote recognition?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asper Barber. County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Coppel. County Commissioner Nara. Yes. County Commissioner Tanaro. County Commissioner Director Rio.
Yes, your correspondent.
Commissioner has been provided with this correspondence, received by the first office in our last meetings correspondence, we have on, on file and office, according to where we're at.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, three minutes for two more.
Minutes of Thursday, May seventeen twenty-four, six thirty P M, according to the.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes from the best meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, sorry, roll call.
County Commissioner Asper Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Presenting the.
County Commissioner Coppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tanaro. County Commissioner Director Rio.
Yes, of course, commissioners, Commissioner, our Dallas County Bar.
Thank you, Director Beers. Uh, tonight, the Middlesex County World Commission has formally proclaimed May twenty, twenty twenty-four as mental health awards month. This year's mental health award is then, where to start, mental health is in the changing world, provides a starting point and guide to those feeling overwhelmed with the pressure of today's world. Early this year, Middlesex County introduced behavioral health navigators. Navigators focus on areas of service such as mental health support, addition and recovery, housing and food security, but also serve as a starting point and guiding hence for residents want, wondering where to start. To get touched with a navigator, you can call seven three two, seven four five, three eight, one zero. On May sixth and seventh, our veteran services program conduct the annual memorial day flag and grave marker distribution. Over forty thousand flags and almost one thousand grave markers were distributed to American Legion's Post, V F W Post, and many other veterans organizations. The flags and markers would be placed on the veterans grave site in the many cemeteries across the county. Memorial Day brief will be distributed on May twenty-four and Saturday, May twenty-fifth, at the flower station in Somerset, New Jersey. And that concludes my report, Director Beers.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenny?
Thank you, Director. Um, a little thing I want to report this time is I had the ability to attend on May tenth, Keep Middlesex Moving, had a screening of what we call the Street Project, which is about, um, New York City and the Vision Zero, um, efforts that are there. It was a, a good movie, an interesting movie, it's a different way to see, um, how they've gotten to the goals that they've gotten to at this point, um, in regards to Queens Boulevard, which was known as the Avenue of Death, um, a hundred and eighty, some people died on that street. Um, they figure it's a cost of, um, of, uh, one million per lost life, and I think it only cost like maybe about ten million or less to fix the road, uh, when the, when the time came, so, um, it was, it was good, there was representatives there from our Middlesex Greenway, there was representatives there on the walk, uh, bike walk with touching, um, and also Highland Park Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, and they spoke after the movie, and, uh, I just want to commend, uh, Keep Middlesex Moving for putting down this presentation, it was, uh, interesting, uh, case, especially what happened during COVID. Um, and that's, I think, all I have at this time, next meeting I'll, I'll give more, uh, of an update on our transportation supposing that we know recently happened.
Thank you. Commissioner Alyssa Coppel?
Thank you, Director. Good evening, the month of May marks the start of our annual audit. Our annual audit is an independent, objective, third-party inspection of the twenty twenty-three financial transactions, records, and reporting activities of the county, focusing on compliance and adherence to specific physical indicators. Our auditors help to ensure that the financial reporting process is transparent, trustworthy, and credible throughout. Middlesex County's charge once again for zero audit recommendations, which determines a direct re collection of the county's sound financial operations. This benchmark adds validity to companies who are looking to access local capital markets and considering to secure funding, which ultimately strengthens our triple A bond rating. That concludes my report for this evening, thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Director Shanti Nara?
Thanks, Director. From the bureaus of solid waste management, environmental, and recycling, on Friday, this Friday, May seventeenth, the divisions will hold another paper shredding event. The program runs from nine A M. to noon, rain or shine, it will be held in the Health Services Parking Lot, which is located at four forty-four Hose Lane in the township of Piscataway. Residents may bring free of charge paper items for safe disposal, thus protecting personal information and identity. Please do not include metals, newspapers, magazines, hardcover books, junk mail, X-rays, or CDs, as these materials, uh, can overwhelm, uh, our collection and disable the shredder. On Sunday, June second, the divisions will hold another paper shredding event. The event will run, uh, again run from nine to noon, rain or shine, be held at Patmaney Park, which is located at one hundred Municipal Boulevard in Edison. If you have any questions on either event, you can visit the county's website or call our divisions at seven three two, seven four five, four one seven zero. And finally, uh, Director, you need to speak to this also, but, um, I have the pleasure of, um, I took the day off, I have the pleasure of attending Middlesex College commencement today, um, fortunately, I missed it last year, but, uh, it is an event I look forward to every year. This year, there were close to seven hundred and fifty grads who were in, uh, present in person with their families to receive their diplomas, and, uh, I absolutely love this event because, uh, so many of the students, um, go through a lot to, to get to Middlesex College and to get through the two-year degrees, and, um, the number of students we saw this year who were wearing, um, uh, sashes that said First Generation Graduate, um, would, would absolutely prove tier to, uh, even the most heartbroken hearts, um, so, I wanted to just say how much I enjoyed the day and give a big shout out to the faculty and staff of the college for the extraordinary work they do supporting these students. And, uh, once again, uh, tell all of the parents and families and loved ones of the students, uh, that they deserve a shout out for the support and a hearty congratulations to all the graduates, not just the ones who attended, but the one thousand four hundred and ninety-two graduates, uh, who, uh, matriculated with their associate's degree, uh, today, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Tanaro?
Director, we are one month out for the start of the Plays in the Park sixty-seven, sixty-second season, uh, so join us, we're summer filled with fun and incredible Broadway caliber productions. First production will be Beauty and the Beast, which runs June nineteenth to June twenty-ninth, make sure you get there early, because the last time Beauty and the Beast was at the Plays in the Park, they sold out. In the Heights runs from July tenth to July twentieth, Funny Thing Happened on the Way to the Forum runs from July thirty-first to August tenth, all shows start at eight P M. As a reminder, the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners is proud to offer complimentary admission to Play's in the Park to all active U S military service members and their families. Complimentary tickets are also available for veterans and their families on Monday and Tuesday performances of each show. We thank you for your service and hope to see you there. Last Saturday, our Conservation Corps hosted their second volunteer event at Thompson Park Partnership with the Middlesex County Cooperative Extension Service. Over sixty volunteers gave their time and energy to remove litter from the shoreline of the Manalton Lake and make improvements in many habitat projects. Make sure you add our, our last great volunteer event for the calendar, which will be celebrated in National Trail Day on June first, from nine A M. to twelve A M., by working on trail system and Thompson Park Conservation Area. Information on Plays in the Park and volunteer events can be found on our website.
That, who's Larry, Director?
Thank you, I would just like to echo my colleagues' comments about today, we went to the college graduation and it was really magnificent, it was nice to see so many graduates attending, this was probably a record year of attendance of graduates, and, uh, there was just so much, so many happy faces, so many, such a glow in the parents and families of the graduates, and even, uh, what was even like icing on the cake as well is that you saw so many graduates that said First Generation Graduates, and then, of course, the student that sang the National Anthem, that young lady belongs on television, I can tell you that, because she was magnificent, but it was a proud day for us, and obviously, it's the best day of the college, and, and for us to go there and witness that, it's really a pleasure and, and exciting. Okay, Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Resolutions to be had? For you.
There are none.
This time I open up the meeting to the public on any resolutions listed. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, Charlie Cradville, Brunswick, New Brunswick today, start on page four, uh, resolution six three nine is, uh, doing some kind of talent search, um, can you tell me whose talent you're hoping to replace, or what positions are open that this search will be for?
This is actually for, uh, folks that are going to be hired at the college when we get done with the C I O plan, we're looking for, you know, some leadership as we develop the, uh, operations strategy for, so, we're going to do that, we're going to do a nationwide search on that.
So this will be somebody that'd be in charge of the stadium?
One of the positions.
Okay, and what are the other ones?
Again, primarily, you're looking at someone's run the operations of the multipurpose venue, uh, primarily the synthetic, uh, fields that are being built on Edison Park, those are, it's the primary role we're looking to fill right now, because as we continue to build out that operations strategy, we want to make sure that person is part of the process of defining the ultimate responsibilities of all the position.
Okay, and since you mentioned it, is the, uh, destination athletic complex still moving forward, what's the status on the National Park Service, uh, process?
Moving forward.
Moving forward, so is that environmental assessment now public?
But, but, it's still working along with the National Park Association on that.
Okay, um, I do see something about synthetic fields here, six forty-two, that's a, that's for a different synthetic field, is that correct?
Those were existing fields that have its own maintenance regrows.
And where are the, the county's synthetic fields?
Uh, Olbridge, Johnson, and, um, I, I, maybe also, uh, I'm not sure, the third one, but, I don't know.
Okay.
I think here at least.
All right, I appreciate it, um, I see six forty-three is, uh, accepting the construction plans and specs for this, uh, stadium and student center, can somebody tell me the total price tag for county taxpayers on those projects? Or, okay, ballpark approximately?
It's a pro, the profit is approximately a hundred and sixty million dollars.
In county funds?
It's, again, it's federal, state, and county with no bar.
Okay, and so what would the county's cut be?
Approximately a third.
A third of one, third of a hundred and sixty million?
Yeah, if you look at, like, the whole complex, when you look at the funding for the student center, the multi-cultural venue, uh, magnet school, it's, it's approximately a third, a third, a third from federal, state, and county funds.
Okay, and I'll move to page six, six fifty-seven, is, uh, educational amenity improvements at the county college, is that part of the C I O plan, or is that just additional amenities separate from that?
One other element of the, uh, the complex is also going to be a, a park recreational facility, and so Ontario will be, the enthusiasm will be, be providing to us a conceptual and overall design of the recreation facility to build out of the college property.
Okay, so, taking away Thomas Edison Park, but building a new park on the college campus.
They're not taking Thomas, they're taking some different Thomas Edison Park.
Turning it into a destination athletic complex would be how you'd say it, right?
I, I believe that the park itself is about a hundred eighty-eight, John, correct, a hundred eighty-eight acres, and which seventy-seven is for the sports complex, so, John.
It's nine fields, and we're going to go to fourteen fields.
Yeah, so today, Thomas Edison Park's a hundred eighty acres total, seventy-seven acres are classified active on three acres today, that comprises nine fields total, sixteen tennis courts as well as a playground. The new destination athletic complex, uh, once we move through the regulatory process with the National Park Service to complete that, the new, um, athletic complex will have fourteen fields, sixteen tennis courts, a playground, every amenity that's there today will continue tomorrow, just really with the addition of five fields. Thank you, I want to thank Mr. Carroll for, uh, talking to me at the, at the event this week and, and, uh, laying out some of the particulars of this project, I also wanted to ask you about six fifty-nine, the addition of fifty thousand dollars to the M C A T budget, can you just explain what that represents?
Thank you, Charlie. This represents various fees and donations we take through the M C A T program, essentially, we put these into a special reserve, when they come to, uh, start without, we pump through a local grant, a manner of budget, which is this resolution, and they use it to maintain.
So these are fees paid by users?
Time is up.
Not mandatory fees, yeah, they're essentially donations.
Suggested donations, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes on resolutions listed only.
Sure, yes, sir.
So, uh, my name is, uh, Robert Peter Rosenberg, I'm a United States Army Officer Veteran, and I want to thank you all, all of you, uh, folks that support the military, active, uh, National Guard and so forth, but that's not why I'm here, I want to especially, um, give a shout out to, um.
Excuse me, sir, but you have to talk about items that are listed, I appreciate your comments.
Okay, let's do that. Oh, okay, I.
You can speak on other items at the other part of the public portion.
Oh, thank you for telling.
You have, right now, it's on, any, uh, resolutions that are listed.
Okay, so, uh, let's go to, uh, twenty-four dash, uh, six, uh, two R, as in Romeo, and all the various others for section eight for veterans.
Six. Which, which page is that?
Oh, okay, sir, that's page three, under, uh, Department of, uh, Community Services, with, uh, the Commissioner, um, Asper Barber, and if you count out after Melissa, Ms. Melissa Lewis, the second one, and then the third one, and, uh, the fourth one, uh, so it's twenty-four, sixty, uh, six, uh, thirty-two R is in Romeo, six thirty-three, six thirty-four, I want to thank you very much for supporting, actively supporting the veterans for section eight, and I'll speak later on if it's appropriate for, uh, when I'm allowed to, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very, thank you, veterans.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, so, page, Mr. Kelso?
Uh, yes, Director, motion would then be in order to adopt consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers twenty-four dash six two seven, through resolution twenty-four dash six seven four.
No, no, uh, Commissioner?
Okay.
Sir, is there a motion to accept, to approve the, uh, consent agenda? Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Asper Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Coppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tanaro. Yes. County Commissioner Director Rio.
Yes. This time I open up the meeting to the public. Is that me? The public?
Yes, sir.
Please come up, state your name, you have five minutes.
Sure. Thank you.
So, uh, my name is Robert Peter Rosenberg, United States Army, uh, retired officer, also, uh, masters at Rutgers and, uh, the University of Pennsylvania undergrad at William Patterson University, uh, so I want to come and, uh, let you all know that even though it's a specific department, thank you, with Asper Barber, and, uh, and, uh, the folks that, um, that are your colleagues for helping the veterans, I think it's really good to know that, that as a veteran, I can say freely, and when I'm sharing it to my colleagues and everything else, that this county is in support of our veterans. It's all I have, make it light, you know, short this week, and I want to, and to commend all of you that, that, that you put your hearts and souls into all the various activities that we do with this county, and, uh, especially for the military, thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
We thank you for your service and all the veterans who service to our country. Anyone else in the public?
Yeah, please.
Seeing none, oh. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradville, Brunswick, New Brunswick today, I'm going to share with you a document. So, unfortunately, there have been, uh, twenty-six lives lost on roads in Middlesex County, um, that's drivers, pedestrians, and passengers, and by my count, nine of them came on Route One. What is the county doing about the fatal crashes, and specifically, have you had any conversations about Route One, how to make that safer and, uh, less fatal?
I'm going to let, uh, Linda Webber, where is she, is she here? Linda, there you are, i- if she could elaborate, you know, we take public safety very serious here, and we, and, and we try to educate the public and interact with local municipalities in trying to make enforcement, but I'm going to let Linda, uh, elaborate a little more of what we're doing.
Hey, Charlie, what are you doing?
Good.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, so we're taking a, the Office of Planning and Department of Transportation is, is taking the very strategic approach to Vision Zero, and, uh, in, with the goal of reducing and eventually eliminating fatal crashes and the serious injury crashes, so we're taking, um, it's a, you might call it a multi-com approach, so we're looking at it from different angles, right? Uh, first, we're tracking the crashes, and we're working now with a team internally so that we can obtain the data on the crash, it's not just the numbers, right, how many crashes there are, but what caused it, right, and then, once we determine what causes it, then we can decide what the next steps are, and that, actually, is time consuming, because it, it actually takes months, sometimes much longer, to find out what the cause of the crash was, right, so, uh, another thing what we're doing is, we map the crashes, we have a high injury network map, we're using that and, and integrating that into our development review process, if there's development that's in or near that area, we're going to take a closer look and see if there's something related to the infrastructure, whether it's road or lighting, uh, solar problem, whatever. What we've been doing for the last few years, and we continue to do, and are more aggressive in doing, is road safety audits, so that's where, we just received a grant from the J T P A to do up to five road safety audits, uh, in the county, and that's where professionals, uh, uh, traffic, uh, engineers and local officials go out to selected areas, and they, they look at how the, the road functions, the users, uh, and then they, they take a look at those safety features to decide, um, identify gas and what might be needed, so that's really important one, because, especially when it's funded through that particular, uh, agency, it often leads then to, uh, other grants that address the problem, right? We're, we continue to do, uh, road improvements, uh, that, that are in compliance with, uh, complete street concepts, uh, prioritizing the safety, uh, of the, of the pedestrian. Probably what's, what, one of the most important things we are doing right now is not actually the road and infrastructure work, is that we're promoting a culture of safety, uh, and we're working through, uh, internally, but, but, uh, much of it is, is through, uh, Keep Middlesex Moving, uh, which is a nonprofit and partner agency, uh, of the county, they do a lot of outreach, whether it's to schools, uh, to, uh, to businesses and all, uh, you probably know this, probably the, the leading cause of, of crashes is distracted drivers, uh, and so, it, it might be a little bit of the road, but it's mostly behavior, and so, what we need to do is change that, change the culture of that, so we're involved with that as well, and then finally, we're collaborating with, uh, communities, and we're going to, uh, reconvene the Vision Zero partnership, probably more towards the end of this year, not, not the next month or two, uh, and then so that we can work with local officials, uh, and the police departments, you've probably seen, the police departments are now, uh, working together, which is really great, uh, and then we can all share information, uh, and talk about success stories, but also talk about challenges, uh, and work on it together, so, uh, we're doing a lot, uh, it takes time, uh, but we're doing a lot.
Thanks, um, U S Senator Bob Hernandez is now on trial, served, declines a call again to resign his position, I also asked some of the other Commissioners, and the response was either no comment or stone cold silence, considering the serious allegations against the Senator involving a variety of crimes committed in various jurisdictions, including Edison, New Jersey, would any of the Commissioners care to comment on those charges and whether or not you think the Senator should resign?
Thank you. Any comment? Time is up, thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please come up to the mic, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hello, everyone, my name is Mike Rude, uh, the reason I come here for you today is.
What's your address, sir?
Uh, Seventy Ford at Milltown, New Jersey. First time here, uh, I'm really not familiar with the whole process, but that's why, um, I've come, so basically, um, in Thompson Park, which I'm hearing mentioning a lot, uh, there was a spring there, with a natural water spring, and, uh, a whole community of thousands of people have relied on the spring for over, um, sixty to seventy years, and one night, people woke up and there was cement over the spring, and many people are wondering, uh, why it was shut down, um, so, we have a group of about two hundred fifty to three hundred people that are very concerned, um, about why the spring was shut down, uh, there was no empirical data from the government on why it was closed, uh, there was no, uh, conflicting data on tap water, for example, um, versus the dangers of the pathogens that are in the water, uh, personally, and I know hundreds of other people, they've been drinking this water from the earth for, um, I've been drinking it since I was a child, I know people have been drinking it for forty, fifty years, never once got sick, uh, forcing now people to go get their water from plastic water bottles, leaching, and microplastics, instead of just drinking it straight from the earth, so a lot of people are just concerned, uh, so we're here to voice our concern, and, um, I hear a lot about the resolutions, I really don't know what that is, so I'd like to know the next steps on how I can get on the agenda so we can speak and we can show ourselves in support of reopening the spring, and also, we would like some answers on why it was shut down and what data they had to, uh, shut down the spring, and from what I understand, is it not the first spring that's been shut down just randomly? So, I'm not sure how many people are familiar with, uh, natural water springs, but they're the purest form of water and they're very clean, um, and people who have been residents in the town have been drinking it for, since they were, since they were children for over fifty years and never had a problem, so, um, basically, I'd just like to know, um, what we can do, what steps we can take to get the spring reopened, and try to get some information on why it was shut.
John, Roy, Gary?
Yeah, yeah. A little bit back.
Please.
Last year, uh, we received, actually, the Parks Department, uh, Rick Leir, the Forward Director, recently reported from the New Jersey Department of Rural Protection Geological Survey, they have a modular, not a, not a drinking water well on park property, they have these throughout the state, uh, that tested very high for PFOS, that's that forever chemical that the E P A now is mandating, uh, has set limits for, that, um, they were concerned because of a, a spring that we have on the park property, that was in close proximity to that modular, so we had discussions, uh, we had several, uh, state meetings, discussion meetings, conference meetings, and we decided to test the spring, we had a contractor, a state certified contractor to test that, uh, it was tested for PFOS last June, and unfortunately, it came back, uh, above the E P A standard for PFOS, the, uh, perfo, actually, perfluoro-hydroxy-acid. Uh, we also tested the springs in Roosevelt Park after that, they were above the, they were well above the, uh, E P A standards also, and the D E P standards, so, the decision was made, we had, we had several meetings, and that's why the decision was made to close the springs, because they're above the, above the. And that's why the decision was made to close the springs, because they're above the, above the standard, they're basically contaminated PFOS for F O A. That's why they're closed.
Were there comparison tests for tap water, for example?
No. I mean, we don't do comparison tests with tap water, no.
So how?
Tap water is, tap water is regulated by the New Jersey Department of Wildlife Protection.
Okay, so like how do we know that that's not contaminated with PFOS, because I know that's everything it is these days?
Well, that's, again, that's regulated by the DEP and EPA. So they do have, there are, they're required to do annual, actually, the blood testing for all contaminants. And they send it out to the, to the users in the public. And if they find, if they're found to be contaminated, they have to make, take steps to remediate that. Either to, you know, put it into filtration or drilling another well. That's, that's what's going on there.
Yeah, just for clarification, EPA has changed the rate on the level of PFOS in the water. And based on that, previously it was classified as okay, is now above the standard, which results in us closing those wells. But for example, with Middlesex Water, they've got to go through and enhance their whole filtration system because of the change in EPA standards to again eliminate the level that EPA now set is too high, so. A year ago, this thing met EPA standards. Once EPA changed the regs, they created a situation that allows for us to force them to shut them down.
Yeah, we knew they were, they were, it took about a year for the EPA to come up with the standard. They were accepting public comment on that. And we did know, they were proposing a level before. And I know the spring in Monroe specifically, Thompson Park, is 4.6. It's just above it, but it is above it. And it's, it's an uncontained source. There's no way to control, you know, the water that comes out there.
Is there a way we could get the data that you guys found?
Sure, you can always, we do an open request, we'll send the records out. We didn't test the water ourselves, it was done by contract, laboratory, you know, state certified laboratory, under state contract. But we have the data. You can always do an open request and we'll send you the data, sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please come up and state your name and address and you have five minutes. Please come up to the microphone. State your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Toni McFeely. I live at 23 Henry Street, Saraval, New Jersey, 08872. Is it okay if I ask questions regarding the Thompson Spring as well, or is that only five minutes dedicated to it?
You can make questions of whatever you would like. You have five minutes. So if you want to ask about the springs, you're more than welcome to ask about it.
Thank you. So are there any steps being taken to remediate the springs or to figure out how they're being flooded and change any regulation that's allowing that pollution?
Well, we can't, we don't set the regulations. They're set by the EPA and DEP. I don't believe with this PF, with this forever chemical, that there's a specific source that's contaminating it. I think in general, it's a general contamination, but we're not quite certain. You know, that's, that's one thing that, I know that DEP is taking steps to see about how they can remediate those. But we have nothing, I know of no way to mediate that spring right now currently, that I know of, that I'm aware of. And I'm not, I'm not, we have a water pollution coordinator who's in charge of the program in our, in our department. But I know of no way to mediate it right now. I'm not sure if the DEP has any, like any steps that they can remediate that, clean that, other than, it's a forever chemical, that's why they call it forever chemical. It lasts a long time, that we do know.
It's my understanding that the advisory of tap water is in order to consume it, that you are recommended to boil it. You can't just, you're, well, you're not supposed to just drink it from the tap, although we shower in it, our skin absorbs it anyway. Are you familiar with any way that an individual might be able to filter out the PFOS themselves?
From, from the spring water?
Like, yes, say I went up to the spring, I gathered some water, I went home, and I filtered it myself. Would that be possible?
I don't know of any approved way to do that. For public, for public utilities, you have to put it through activated charcoal or anionization process. That I do know. But as far as like, again, this is an, this is an uncontained natural sources of water. It's not really a drinking water source per se. So, but I know of no method that's approved that can filter out PFOS. What, what you were talking about before is for bacteria. The springs consistently came up high for bacteria. That's why they have to sign up here that boil the water. There's no, there's no way that, that I know of that we can, you can, as an individual, take that water and be certain that they can get the contaminant, the PFOS out.
Are there steps that could be taken to adjust that regulation so that people could have the right to choose for themselves where they consume water from?
That's regulated by, on the state and federal level. I don't know of any mechanism to, that I could, you know, to change this.
We can't dictate to the federal government or state government to change their regulations. We just don't have that authority. It's up to them to dictate of what regulations for PFOS or any other bacteria or chemicals that may be contaminating a source that's regulated by the federal government or state government.
So where do I go next?
I would say, I would recommend talking to the DEP or talking to the EPA and asking them how, what's their next steps or what's their recommendation to correct that, if it can be corrected. But I mean, it's only, you know, I, from, as a layman myself, what I'm thinking is what I, I interpret it as, it's for public safety so people don't get any kind of diseases or, yeah, diseases.
I understand the concern, but I also understand autonomy. And if people start to choose, and the tradition of gathering water is very significant to some families and spiritual practices. So, but I thank you for answering my questions and taking the time, and I guess I'm gonna have to go elsewhere for more answers. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Motion to close the public portion? Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.